Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 21st, 2020, Meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jeff Benton, President of the Board, for at least another week or so. I'm Gary Merrill, our Vice President, who's to my right, and our Administrator, Mike Frommer. Our left is Barb Lewis, our fellow Commissioner, and Jennifer Wallraven is going to run the meeting today. So, please, go ahead.
Resolution number 20-1150, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held December 17th, 2020.
So moved.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1150. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1151, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 1218 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 1218.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1151. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1152, in the matter of accepting the Treasurer's report for the month of November 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1152. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Next up, we have a 9:30 Tefra hearing on Marion County bonds for United Church Homes. We are on a bridge conference call for this.
Is it set up now?
It's on.
It's on, okay. Good.
Resolution number 20-1153, public hearing with respect to proposed issuance by the County of Marion, Ohio, of the issuer's revenue bonds in one or more series in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $35 million to assist United Church Homes Incorporated, an Ohio nonprofit corporation or limited liability company, the sole member of which United Church Homes or one of United Church Homes affiliates is financing or refinancing the acquisition, construction, installation, equipping, furnishing, and improvement of certain healthcare facilities constituting hospital facilities as defined in Section 140.01 of the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1153. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
And then our resolution number 20-1154, in the matter of approving for a specific occurrence a suspension of Rule 3 Speaker Registration, Rule 4 Limitations, and Rule 7 Public Comment Procedures from the rules governing public comment before the Board of County Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1154. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, so the hearing is open. I don't know that we... The statement from our counsel, Eric, did you have anything to comment on about this?
I'm not sure whether anybody's on.
I haven't heard anyone else doing it.
So no one... There's no calls participating in this? Again, as with these that we do very rarely or very occasionally is just making sure that there's no liability, no possibility of exposure to the county by approving this. And I'm confident there is no liability.
I am very dis-
I'm confident of that. I'm concerned that they were supposed to be on the call. I'm wondering if the call information is working. I'm surprised that they're not on.
Can we confirm that?
Yeah.
Phone?
Yes. Can we have somebody try that?
You'd think they had water behind it, wouldn't you?
Hello?
The attorney representing UHC was supposed to be on the call?
Yes, that was Mr. Hostetler's understanding.
Good.
We weren't expecting any public.
They did know it was 9:30 because-
They are the ones who advertised it for 9:30, so that's why-
They knew it was 9:30 then.
Yes.
We typically do these a day, a lot of these things.
Yeah.
I was asking, we're in a confusion.
Welcome to my home conference. Please enter your particip-
Good morning. Hello.
What?
How are you?
Ah, there we go. I'm sorry, we had a hard time understanding. Hang on, we'll get the volume up here. Okay.
Good morning, this is Mike Melior with Mike Miller. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you now fine, thank you. I don't know, you probably haven't been participating in this hearing so far, I'm guessing?
Not so far. I think I was just connected to the conference just a moment ago.
Okay. Well, we just started our December 21st session, passed a couple resolutions, and now we've opened the hearing and waived the various speaker rules. So, we are in a position where we can proceed with the hearing. And if you had any comments, testimony? I guess it wouldn't be testimony though, would it, Eric?
No, just information.
Just information, comments? You can state those at this time?
I'm happy to. Thank you for considering this as an item this morning. Again, my name is Mike Melior. I'm an attorney with Mike Miller, serving as Bar Counsel for United Church Homes in connection with a proposed issuance of catched debt residence bonds for the acquisition of an independent living facility in Delaware County. United Church Homes is headquartered in Marion County, Ohio, and Marion County allegedly is the issuer of the proposed catched debt bonds. But because the facility to be financed with the bonds is located in Delaware County, we've asked the Delaware County Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and approve the issuance of bonds by Marion County for the project located in Delaware County. And that's pursuant to both federal test law and state law for Marion County to issue the bonds outside of its jurisdictional needs approval of the governmental jurisdiction in which the project is located. So, the resolution for the Delaware County Commissioners this morning does two things. One, approves issuance of the bonds for a project located in Delaware County, and also authorizes the Delaware County Commissioners into an agreement with Marion County that basically says just that, that Delaware County is okay with Marion County issuing bonds for a project located in Delaware County. I believe on the call this morning, from United Church Homes are John Ritter, the Senior Vice President and Financial Officer, and Ken Young, a Senior Vice President and a General Counsel for United Church Homes. If you have any questions regarding the series or the bond financing or legal implications for the series, we'll have to answer those questions. And if there are any questions regarding the project finance, I'm sure John or Ken from United Church Homes will be able to address those.
Okay. Questions from our Commissioners, fellow Commissioners?
I just would, at some point, like Eric to just, for the record, state that there's no legal-
Yeah. I had a question, just... Where is the project specifically? And what's the timeline for it being built? And how many beds would it be? Or how many rooms?
John, if you want to answer those questions.
Good morning, this is John Ritter from United Church Homes. The project is going to be located right in the area of the Fluris Mall area. And the project is near completion. We're acquiring it from a developer. And there will be 136 units of this independent living when it's open.
Okay.
To take that up and be sometime in the first quarter of 2021.
Okay. Thank you. I always like to know what's going on. Good to have more retirement facilities in the county. Commissioner Merrill had a-
I just wanted, for the record, Eric, to confirm that there is no legal obligation on the part of the county or taxpayers.
That's correct. Delaware County is not pledging any of its revenues. This is strictly authorization under the applicable statutes as they cited to allow for the issuance to go forward since it's happening in Delaware County. Mike, I did have one question. This is Eric Hostetler. The resolution title that we read referenced the maximum amount of $35 million. I recall that there was a change to that. Could you please confirm the maximum amount?
Yes, it should be $40 million. That was made in the treaty notice that we had published. So, the resolution, yes, should reflect a non-to-achieve amount of $40 million rather than $35.
Okay.
Although the expected amount is probably around $35. I want us to authorize a little bit more than that just to have a little discipline. So, we don't have to come back to the County Commissioners that it does, that'd be slightly worth $35 million.
Okay, well, the resolution that we consider for approval will make sure that that amount is reflected.
Do we need an amendment, or we-
No, I mean, all we've got is open the hearing. So, that's the resolution you'll be considering. We'll make sure the amount's correct. Thank you.
Okay.
I was asking if anybody else had anything to say?
Yeah. Yeah, this is Commissioner Benton. Any other comments from any of the individuals on the call or Commissioners here?
I have no comment.
So, no additional comments? Okay. With that, Jennifer, would you read a motion to close the hearing, please? I think that's the next step in it, Eric.
Resolution number 20-1155, in the matter of closing the public hearing with respect to the proposed issuance by the County of Marion, Ohio, of the issuer's revenue bonds in one or more of the series in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $40 million to assist United Homes Incorporated, an Ohio nonprofit corporation or a limited liability company, the sole member of which is United Children's Home, which or one of United Children's... Sorry about that. The limited liability company, the sole member of which, one or of UCH's affiliates, in financing or refinancing the acquisition, construction, installation, equipping, furnishing, and improvement of a certain healthcare facility constituting hospital facilities as defined in Section 140.01 of the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 20-1155. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, the hearing is now closed. Discussion?
Just a comment, since we've done these before, and just wanted, for the record, to confirm that there's no liability to our taxpayers, which there is not. So, with that, I would support the resolution.
Okay. Jennifer, if you could read a resolution to... Yeah, go ahead, read a resolution to approve, unless Commissioner Lewis had further comments?
No.
Resolution number 20-1156, resolution granting approval of the issuance by the County of Marion of its revenue bonds, a portion of the proceeds of which will be used to finance or refinance a facility to be owned and operated by United Church Homes Incorporated or an affiliate thereof located within the County of Delaware, Ohio, and approving the execution of a public hospital agency agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, early discussion? All right, let's take a vote.
Vote on motion 20-1156. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Okay. That motion is approved.
Yes, it is.
So, we will end the conference call. And gentlemen, thanks for participating.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item number five, and this is the review of the annexation petition.
Okay. I think our Counsel, Eric Hostetler, has comments on this petition?
Eric Hostetler, Staff Attorney. This annexation petition was actually a re-filing of one that was previously rejected by the Board due to one of the statutory criteria not being met. For the review of the petition, the seven items that the Board must review under the statute because additional objections have been filed by Berlin Township and Berkshire Township to the refiled petition. And the objections were based on the same criteria that if a street or highway will be divided or segmented by the boundary line between the township and the municipal corporation as to create a road maintenance problem. So, the petition is essentially identical to the previous one in which you found that criteria one through six had been met, and a review of this petition would indicate that those have been met in the refiled petition. So, the question before you would be just with respect to that seventh criteria about the road segmentation. What has changed in this petition compared to the one that you previously rejected is that Sunbury made a modification to its services resolution in which they tracked this statutory language about what their obligations are due to the segmentation of the road. And in my opinion, their language in their services resolution meets the requirements set forth by the Supreme Court of Ohio in State Ex r Alzina versus the Green County Board of County Commissioners. So, my opinion is that you do not have any basis to deny the petition on this ground due to the Supreme Court's opinion in that case.
So, that's the change that the Village of Sunbury made?
Correct. They... What they did is in their services resolution, previously, they had just made a reference to they would maintain any road right-of-way as a part of this annexation. What they did was they added an additional statement that in the event of a segmentation, which this particular annexation does create a segmentation of 3Bs and K Road, that the village would either, as a condition of the annexation, agree to assume the maintenance of that street or highway or to otherwise correct the problem. And that's the exact language that they included in their services resolution. So, by including that specific language, they have addressed this objection.
And Berkshire and Berlin... But Berkshire and Berlin still objected.
They did. And actually, Berkshire Township's objection was essentially a copy and paste of their previous objection. In fact, they even used the dates from the previous petition. Berlin Township addressed it more specifically. They stated that, yes, that language was in there, but there's not an actual agreement. What the court has said is that it doesn't actually have to be an agreement. You have to take that statement at face value. And so, that's what I'm advising you to do.
Okay.
And the timeline on this? This has a timeline that... There is a deadline?
Yes, you have to... I think the next meeting that the Board has scheduled would be outside of the-
Correct.
-timeframe, so you have to address it today.
And our choice is either approve it or deny it. And we'd have to deny it on one of those seven grounds, which we've already approved the first six, and the changes on the seventh look like a mirror-
That's correct.
...requirement. Okay. If you had comments?
Well, if we denied it, then we would be in a court battle. And we would lose because the law is clear. The Ohio Supreme Court has laid out the criteria, so I would move that we do grant the annexation petition.
I would second it based on the advice of counsel, which I believe we need to follow.
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer, let's read the motion to approve the grant.
Resolution number 20-1157, in the matter of granting the annexation petition of 78.017 acres of land in Berkshire Township, 2.02 acres in Berlin Township, 76.0.15 acres to the Village of Sunbury. It's motioned by Commissioner Lewis and seconded by Commissioner Merrill.
Further discussion? Let's take a vote?
Vote on motion 20-1157. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
That brings us to item number six on page 82. Resolution number 20-1158, in the matter of approving the First Amendment to the Software Maintenance Agreement between Courtview Justice Solution Incorporated Doing Business as Equivalent and the Board of Delaware County Commissioners, the Delaware County Clerk of Court's Office for the Case Management System used by Delaware County Clerk of Courts and Common Pleas Court.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Welcome, Natalie.
Thank you. Good morning.
Here we go, we can hear you a lot better.
It is Natalie, that's why.
Natalie.
Natalie Frevel, Delaware County Clerk of Courts. Good morning. We are here to present our First Amendment to our Software Maintenance Agreement with Courtview. As you know, Courtview is our case management system that's used by my office and also all of the offices of Common Pleas Court. This extension will take us up until December of 2022.
Two years, good. We have a Prosecutor Office representative here today, Chris Betts. Any comments?
I feel like it's the great reveal when you take off your mask.
That's right.
Good morning. Christopher Batts, Assistant Prosecutor, Attorney with the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. As Clerk Frevel stated, this is a software maintenance agreement extension of the 2018 agreement. It's the First Amendment. It extends it for two years. The original agreement allowed for a one-year extension, but we changed that in this to allow for a two-year extension. That just seemed more efficient at this point. I don't have any particular comments on it. The total amount of the agreement is $73,727, and that's divided between two years. So, certainly, if you have any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer those.
Natalie, are you pleased with the software?
We are, yes. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Let's take a vote, Jennifer.
Vote on motion 20-1158. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Resolution number 20-1159, in the matter of approving the Mitele Support and Software Assurance Agreement for support programs to cover post-implementation requirements for technical support, hardware replacement, software upgrades, and training.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. This is a maintenance agreement for the county's telephone system, the Mitele phone system. So, our original purchase concluded five years of support, and that expires the end of this year. So, we have to do a one-year maintenance agreement, continue that support.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1159. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1160, in the matter of approving the Child Placement Service Contract and Addendum between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and Child Placement Provider Foundations for Living.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This is just placing contract in place so that we have the option to place our children with that if they come to our care. We currently do not have anyone at this location.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1160. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1161, in the matter of approving a memorandum of understanding between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and the Delaware Moral Mental Health and Recovery Services Board for this sobriety treatment and reducing trauma program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And this is just an MOU with no health recovery services board, so we can utilize our Ohio Star grant funding. They are actually contracting through Mary Haven to hire our peer mentor, and then this money will be applied towards that position.
How much are we talking about here?
This contract is $47,000. Our grant is $170,000. And we are in the process of the coordinator for the Ohio Star program. Eventually, once it's up and running, it'll also pay for wages for the caseworker and other services provided through the grant.
Okay. All right, vote, Jennifer.
Vote on motion 20-1161. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas to you, Your Chair.
How long has it been around, the Start Program?
We were in the second cohort, and we've actually been in it two years. So I think it's four or five.
Four or five.
They're working on their fourth cohort. That information has to be submitted by January, and they've already received approval and funding, so they're looking at the cohort five next October, I believe.
Ah, okay.
So. And it's a process getting them up and running. All counties are experiencing that, but we're doing our best.
Sure. Oh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six two in the matter of approving a professional services agreement with MS Consultants for final design and process treatment upgrades at the Lower Scioto Water Reclamation Facility and Tartan Fields Wastewater Reuse Facility and Design of the Scioto Reserve Pump Station Project.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
Morning Commissioners Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is a project that was identified in our two thousand and sixteen master plan. We're getting to the point now where we're ready to proceed forward with design. The project's going to include upgrades to the Tartan Fields Treatment Plant, upgrades to the Lower Scioto Treatment Plant, and then also decommissioning the Scioto Reserve Treatment Plant, pumping that flow up to Lower Scioto for treatment, and then bringing effluent back to the golf course for irrigation water. The contract is going to be six hundred and eighty thousand for the scope of services with MS, and right now they've estimated the project cost to be eight million dollars.
And timeline?
So we're looking at a year for design, and then likely a year for construction after that.
All three?
Yeah. So we're a couple of years out.
Okay. Okay. You got a lot on the agenda this morning.
I know. Yeah. A lot of big projects.
I know. Must be year-end.
Right. Must be.
All right. Let's. Let's take a vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six two. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six three in the matter of approving a contribution agreement with North Star Residential Development LLC for preliminary professional services at the North Star Water Reclamation Facility.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
So the purpose of this project is we're trying to achieve seasonal limits at the North Star Treatment Plant where we can actually discharge to the stream versus discharging into the pond. The pond is, that's the jurisdiction of the lamp permit with the EPA. It's typically a lot easier to not have to deal with a lamp permit. So what we're looking at doing here is we're going to be coming forward with a contract with Hazen and Sawyer next in January that would look at how we could achieve those limits that were set by the EPA to discharge to the stream. Now, if we're able to do that, that helps out Nationwide because there are some fields that are set aside to be spray fields where that effluent would go and it would be sprayed, you know, out into those fields because the pond eventually will reach its maximum capacity, and then we'll use the spray fields in addition. So because there is some of that land that would then open up for potential development, that made sense for us to partner with Nationwide and split the cost of this fifty-fifty because it helps us at the plant, it helps them with the land. The cost of that project is going to be forty-six thousand five hundred, I believe, so each of our share would be twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
This is a big step. The lamp permits are much less stringent than the direct discharge. It speaks very well to Tiffany's operational staff, to all. They have that mic on. I mean, I think you guys all know the challenges.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And to get it to a place where you can be able to direct discharge to Big Walnut Watershed and meet the proposed limitations. Tiffany's being pretty, she's not talking about what a great job they've done in working on that plant, so.
Does this, is it, so is it used in the golf course, then?
What's that?
The effluent?
Yeah. Yep. And then, so also in the future, so this contract with Hazen and Sawyer will give us some recommendations that you need to do X, Y, and Z at the plant to be able to meet these limits. We then plan on going back and having another negotiation with Nationwide and looking at, okay, well, what's, you know, what's the share for each of us, you know, based on what we're getting out of the project? So I think that's, you know, that's something that would be coming down the road as well.
Do you understand that?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's like in about three years since we had the conversations about the liners, it's working fine and no problems?
Yeah. Yeah. Everything's been working fine. We haven't had any issues since, I think, when we started here, and that was all being repaired.
And at some point, we're talking about having to potentially expand that package plant? Is that?
Right. Yeah. There is setup to double in size in the future. I know Nationwide has mentioned that they're moving a little slower with developing up there than they anticipated, so I think that's further down the line. We still see very low flows at that plant right now.
I think the expansion will be significantly less with this, with this.
Right. Yeah.
Good. Good creative solution, positive solution.
Yeah.
Okay. Vote, Jennifer.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six three. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six four in the matter of approving a design-build agreement and a memorandum of understanding with Rumkey Waste Incorporated for the Delaware County Transfer and Recycling Center Design, Build, Finance, Operate Project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
So this has been a long time in the making. We're finally here. I'm glad before the end of the year, get this agreement approved. So this is for the design, build, finance, operate with Rumkey. I think we've been working on this, negotiating back and forth for months and months, maybe even closer to a year. So right now, where we're at is we're going to be putting the, we're calling the TRC, the Transfer and Recycling Center. We're going to be putting that up near forty-two, basically just to kind of cross that road from where the existing transfer station is located. Right now, Rumkey is estimating the new build to be four point two million, and that does include a little bit of office space. There's a half million dollars of office space that we'll work through how much of that we really need. They're going to start design in January. They anticipate being in construction by August, and then to have this facility open by February of two thousand twenty-two. So these, the transfer station fees are fixed. There's actually a twenty-year tipping fee schedule that we have based on what that final number is after they complete their design. So if it's four point two million, the costs will be exactly what are listed in that schedule now. If they fluctuate, there's a, basically, we've agreed on a price, you know, increase or decrease based on that schedule for each hundred thousand dollars that is higher or lower than the four point two million. So we'll continue working through that and, you know, trying to keep that number as close as we can or lower than the four point two million over the next year in design.
This is going to be up to towards forty-two, not in the back. There were some discussions.
Correct. Yep. Yep. Up near forty-two, that's where this cost came from. I think the cost would have been more to put it in the back because of the long driveway access.
That's a concern.
Right. And also the utilities to get back there.
And maintenance.
Right.
Does Rumkey have other transfer stations and different locales?
They do. Do you know, Mike, where some of the locations are? Or is it just the landfills?
They have a pretty significant one. It's like the Marburg or something.
Yeah.
Columbus, which is their recycling hub.
Okay.
And I think, this is a real convenient location for them, I think.
For them.
To connect some of their landfills with their Columbus operations.
Okay. That's great.
Yeah. We're really excited to be, you know, moving forward with this project. I think, you know, doing a design, build, finance, operate, it'll be, you know, it'll be a really interesting, you know, thing to be a part of, and I'm really glad that we've, I feel like we've come to a good agreement with Rumkey.
Yes.
I feel like we're in a good place moving forward.
Oh, yes.
I think one of the concerns, you know, in particular, DKMM, when, like, the city of Marion privatized their, they lost control of their tipping fees. And as Tiffany indicated, our tipping fees are going to be controlled for twenty years. They're going to start out where they currently are. So it's a huge win to be able to do that.
Yeah. So I also forgot to mention, so this, you know, assuming that we do go forward and build the TRC, this would be a ten-year agreement where we're locked in with them for ten years, and then at the end of ten years, we would have the ability to either go forward for another five or ten years at that time, or get out of the agreement altogether. So that's kind of the reevaluation period is in ten years.
The, one of the important things that I'm pretty sure I read in there is that we retain ownership of the facility.
Yes.
So at the end of ten years, it doesn't revert to Rumkey for a dollar. I mean, it's our facility.
No. It's our facility. At the end of ten years, we would have the option to buy them out of that contract. So if they've spent four point two million, we would, we have a.
Residual value.
Yeah. We have what that value is. Maybe it's two point five million or something that we could pay at that time. I think we actually have two point three million in our account right now. So that would be an option in ten years, would be to buy it out.
They have to keep it properly maintained in that period?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. They have to keep it maintained. We look at it every five years. We have an independent consultant come in and look at what are the damages? Is it stuff that's normal wear and tear? If it is, then, you know, it's paid for by the county and not rolled into that cost, you know, of the buyout. If it's damage that was negligence, then they would pay that for those repairs.
Could you explain what the benefits are, for instance, to citizens in the city of Delaware?
Yeah. So I think the benefits are we're going to have, you know, a lot better recycling. People can bring their recycling there and drop it off for free. They can bring, you know, anything that they have, and, you know, versus previously, I'm not sure if we even took any recycling at all. No, I don't think we did. And so now they can drop off anything that they want to recycling-wise for free, also locking in those rates. So we, you know, we're going to keep the rates the same but have a lot better service. The traffic flow in and out is going to be much simpler than previously. People were backed up on forty-two on a Saturday trying to drop off their, you know, construction debris or whatever they had. So I think there's a lot of benefits for the public.
There really are. Yeah.
Also, you know, to the taxpayers, you know, where a lot of counties would have borrowed the four million, we're actually harnessing a private investment into that facility. So we're getting a new facility, and there's not a, there's no additional burden to the taxpayers through general fund or any obligation, which I think is fascinating.
Good point.
To harness that.
Yes.
You know, private investment into the community based on the services we use and something like that.
Boy, that's great. It's a win-win all the way around.
It is. And we have to give a lot of credit to Eric for helping us make this happen because, you know, I never thought I would actually be a part of a design, build, finance, operate, but he was able to kind of work through, you know, how we could make it happen and be beneficial to both parties.
Oh, gosh. That's great. That's great. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. The, on page one oh five, it says the processing fee shall be ninety dollars per ton. What does that represent?
So do you remember, Mike, is that?
Is that the recycling fee?
Does it say recycling processing fee?
It just says the processing fee shall be ninety dollars per ton.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that's a recycling fee. You know, one of the challenges to this process has been the commodities market instability. And this really helps the city of Delaware, who is the biggest recycling user in the area, is really committed to that. And this allows them to lock that in so that, once again, this is, not only is the building being constructed, you know, by the amount of transfer revenue, the recycling rates are being held at that price to take them down off of the residential service drop off as well as the, for the city of Delaware to contribute their first things.
And then Delaware City pays for what they drop off?
Yes.
Right. So only the residential users get it for free. Any municipality or townships or whoever would drop off recycling, they're paying. Rumkey's paying, you know, for the stuff that they bring in as well.
Did that help really, I think you guys are aware of what DKMM, the challenges of some of these companies doing recycling couldn't no longer afford to do it, the commodities market fell out. This provides that ability to continue, once again, leveraging the volume of trash that's coming into this, that would build a new facility but guarantee that there's recycling rates that are affordable.
This would apply to residents in other townships, too, as well as the city of Delaware if they wanted to recycle.
Whoever brings recycling material.
I assume, is there any restriction on who can bring recycling here? I mean, from where they live? No, you don't have to, like, give your address, right?
I think this would allow the township hauling contracts to provide a reliable recycling source. Before, you know, I think some of the townships liked to see recycling. The problem before was they'd have to take it all the way to Columbus. I think this provides them with a more reliable source to move.
I know the southern townships, Genoa, Orange, and Liberty have Rumkey recycling. So we all have Rumkey recycling.
Me, too.
Down there. But anyway, the resident, yeah, for residents, that's great. I mean.
Rumkey pays the same fee when they drop off their stuff there as well, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And they are building an office for DKMM?
So we have, we have the half million dollars in there for offices. It's not necessarily going to be, I think it's, I think it's something we need to work through with DKMM. You know, do they want an office in there, do they not? I think originally they didn't. So we're, we'll work through that, you know, now that we're proceeding forward with design.
Would that be their main office then? I guess that hasn't been determined.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure that they're looking to move from where they are currently.
Okay.
But we'll have that option there and work through that.
I think you could also decide to, some of the office space, you know, currently the county, the person from the health district handles the recycling and everything. With the revenue that the county is getting from the tipping fees, we could decide to invest a little bit more in the recycling robust program and whatnot. And we haven't had the facilities to do that in the future. It might be something in the future you guys want to consider, you know, moving forward. And that's why you would want the office space.
Sure.
If we're not planning on doing recycling or, you know, then DKMM is supposed to move their offices around.
Yeah. I think they moved, I want to say for ten years. There's a, they left Mary Amendment to Knox about four or five years ago. It comes up, I think, I think it's over ten, or there's a number. I might be wrong with the number, but.
Yeah. Eric Hostetler, Staff Attorney. I did just want to point out, since this is a design-build contract, you were asking about the office space. There will be a period of pre-construction services where they're doing the design work, and during that process, there will be, I think we put in maybe thirty, sixty, ninety percent completion. At each of those intervals, there will be discussions about where the design is budget-wise and what the facility is going to look like. And at the end of that process, there is a guaranteed maximum price amendment. And at that point is when you lock yourself in as to what we're actually going to build. So we could decide through the design process that we're not going to need those offices, and then that would come out of the design, and the GMP amendment would therefore be lower because there would not be as much construction. So that's just kind of the overall process. It helps understand how this deal is structured.
Oh, great. Thank you.
The only thing, though, is just, there's a lot of the rate that's on destination charges. So if you sit here and think, if you eliminate five hundred thousand, it's not a ten percent reduction or twelve percent reduction in the K fees. Just understand that. Once again, I think Tiffany went through this. If you eliminate the five hundred thousand.
You say like fifty cents or something?
It's not like, you know, to, you know, if you're sitting here like me and you're thinking to the math, well, it's four million dollars to cut five hundred thousand, it's going to reduce it by.
Yeah. The actual portion of the fee that's just, you know, attached to that cost is like, I don't know, maybe.
Because that's spread over ten years.
Fifty-six dollar per ton fees, something like that.
What it does, however, is lower what that residual value is. So if we get to the end of the ten years, that's where, you know, we would see the benefit if we have to buy that out, or it would take fewer years to get to a zeroed-out residual value. So, I mean, that's where the bigger benefit is, not on the rates, but on the residual value for the actual cost of construction of the facility.
Okay. Boy, thank you. Thanks, Eric, for working on that.
Another question is the price adjustments. Rumkey has the right to adjust for increasing costs annually based on changes to federal state and local laws, et cetera, and cost of operations. And it says, or five percent. So they, the way I read it, they can increase their fees five percent a year.
Is that the way that that is, Eric? Is it that, every single year, that could be five percent? I don't think that's the way that we negotiated that.
So if you're talking about, again, on page one oh five, is that what you were reading?
One oh five. Right.
Yeah. Second to last paragraph.
They reserve the right to adjust the processing fee and transportation fee annually based on changes, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. So that does not apply to the entire agreement. So every single fee component within the agreement has its own price adjustment factor. So if you're looking at the, let me go back. So that price adjustment would only apply to these, and the way that it was negotiated was they had originally wanted to base it on the CPI. And so what we did was, we negotiated a cap, because they actually, they didn't, let me take that back. They wanted to have a flat rate that they could go up to. What we negotiated on all of the fee increases was it would be the CPI or a cap, whichever was lower. And so if you look at the, maybe we don't have this in here. I don't think we put all of the exhibits in.
No, we referenced the exhibits.
Yeah. So I don't have it in front of me. But if you look at the actual rates, those rates are locked in, and what they have the ability to have price adjustments are related to fuel, and we cited to the specific fuel CPI. And there is also the ability for that fuel surcharge to drop off if they change from diesel to some other alternative fuel because our consultant advised us that there's a move towards compressed natural gas for a lot of these vehicles. And so if the fleet moves away from diesel, then, you know, they would not be getting that, we would not be basing the increases on the diesel CPI anymore because that's not what they're using. So those are built into every single component of the fee structure. This price adjustment here would only apply to the recycling fees that are stated in that section, not to the entire fee structure.
Okay. The way I read that is two point five, two point three percent are the consumer price index, but no more than five percent. So. Right. Right. Yeah. I'm just, I'm a little sensitive because DKMM negotiated an agreement with Rumkey that they actually got quite a bit more increases than what I thought they were getting because of the wording of the agreement in terms of the transfer fees that they were, they were charged, that they were charging DKMM. So, okay. Just want to make sure that that was, I think that's it for me. Other questions? Again, congratulations on getting this done. This is going to be.
Wow.
A very good ad, long-term, solve the problem, and so on. Just an observation. If DKMM chose not to, and there's no reason why they will, move into that location, there's really no reason to have the office space, I don't think. The idea of having the health department have a person there, the cost of constructing that would be considerable, and it's my best guess that they would not be housed there forty hours a week. So I think, I think it's either DKMM or nothing.
Sure.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Health district's building a whole new building. And not that far away.
Well, we'll certainly have you, the three of you, a part of those discussions, you know, as we get to that point, and see what it does to the, to the cost of the tipping fees and the residual value and make that decision.
But any office construction, or the cost of construction, it would be substantial for what you're talking about if it's only health department. So.
Yeah. I agree.
Now, in a perfect world, DKMM wanted to be there, which I think there's a good argument for that, but I think there's a lot of, and I don't mean to stagger a lot of parochialism because there has been this rotation. In theory, actually, that would end if we did that. So that would require twelve commissioners getting together and agreeing. And they're going to be here in March, hopefully for a meeting rather than virtual. That might be an appropriate conversation. Yeah. That's a new, that's good.
Yep. Sounds good.
Yep. Okay. Again, good to see this coming to fruition, and you guys have been working real hard on this for a long time. And again, it's just going to upgrade the service and improve the finances and so on. So right, right, right structure for a whole bunch of reasons. Let's take a vote, Jennifer.
All right. We are on page one one six. Vote on motion twenty dash one one six four. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yep. Merry Christmas.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six five in the matter of declaring necessity to improve Township Road number one zero nine, Big Walnut Road, and approve a professional services agreement with Structure Point Incorporated for the project known as Dell one zero. and approve a professional services agreement with Structure Point Incorporated for the project known as Dell one zero nine, Township Road one zero six dash two point eight one, Big Walnut Road at South Old Three C and Tusick Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning. Chris Boserman, County Engineer. The, the item before you is a consultant contract to make improvements to Big Walnut Road at the intersections that were outlined. And we've gone through the QBS process. This is about a three and a half million dollar construction contract. That'll likely be built in twenty-three or twenty-four. So.
This is, this is.
Any questions?
It's just four-way stop now, isn't it?
Yes, there are, let's see, is it two-way stop at Tusick, I think, in Big Walnut?
Two-way.
Yeah, it's four-way at, at.
Would this be around about at each?
Yeah, the, the contract will evaluate the, the effectiveness of both around about and a traffic signal, but it'll be one or the other.
One, one or the other.
Part of the task of the consultant will be to do an analysis of which is the most efficient.
Sure. Boy, there, there's that old brick building that's owned by Genoa Township. That's right on the corner of Tusick.
There's actually some interesting, good news about that. You may have heard that. That Genoa Township, with assistance from Representative Carfagna, got a grant through the capital budget to, to relocate that to McNamara Park.
Oh, that'd be great.
That's good news from the township, from a historical preservation standpoint, but it's also good news for our project that we won't have to impact.
That's terrific.
Won't have to impact that structure.
Yeah, that's so close to that intersection.
Yeah.
It's really scary. It's so close to, yeah.
Should the state consider both of those things when they prove the money, we don't know, as far as moving it and also.
You know, I don't know to what degree they used our upcoming project as leverage. But I'm, I'm not, I wasn't part of the application process. So.
Boy, that's great.
Well, that's good. I mean, those are two intersections that need work.
Yeah.
It's good that, that it's moving forward. All right, Jennifer?
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six six. In the matter of declaring necessity to improve County Road one twenty-three, Hyatt's Road, and approve a professional services agreement with Kenley Horn and Associates for the project known as Dell CR one two three dash one point three zero, Hyatt's Road Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This, this contract will design the improvements to the, to Hyatt's Road between the Sawmill Parkway Roundabout and the New Stites Road Roundabout. So, it'll take that to a three-lane. There's a development road midway between those two roundabouts. Instead of the developer building a turn lane there, they contributed their cost to the, to this larger project. I think it's a good, good way for us to leverage development funds and a good public-private partnership project. So.
Okay.
Glad to answer any questions.
When is this one going to be?
In the same timeframe, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah. All right, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six seven. In the matter of approving the Plattsup subdivision for the courtyards at Clear Creek, Section Two, Phases A and B, The Cove at Evans Farm, Evans Farm, Section Two, Phase B, and Evans Farm, Section Two, Phase C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
All of these Platts are, have been through the approval process at Regional Planning, signed by all the appropriate agencies. I'm recommending approval.
And notice there's one lot in the Cove at Evans Farm. Where, it's twenty, twenty, you almost do.
You may have to help me with that. Is that, is that the piece that's at North Road and Lewis Center on the west side of the tracks? It's a commercial lot?
That's my understanding. It's a commercial. It's a commercial lot, so.
Okay. Vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six eight. In the matter of approving specifications and setting bid opening date and time for the twenty twenty-one Drainage Maintenance Annual Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, we, we receive bids for drainage maintenance activities. So, these are the, the work on drainage petitions that your board approves and go on to the drainage maintenance system that soil and water, the Soil and Water Conservation District leads that activity. But the, the contractors who bid this will be, then available to perform those services as they arise in the coming year. We're scheduled to go to bid on January twenty-sixth.
I know we do this every year.
We have for the last couple of years. This is the second or third time we've done it. Yeah.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six eight. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one six nine. In the matter of approving wideway work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
All, all standard routine permits that we've reviewed and recommend approval.
Okay, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one six nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven zero. In the matter of approving owners' agreements for Pyatt Preserve, Section One, Phase A, Pyatt Preserve, Section One, Phase B, and Villas at Old Harbor West.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These are our normal development agreements. They've paid the inspection fees as noted, and I'm recommending approval.
Okay, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Brings us to page one thirty-five. Resolution number twenty dash one one seven one. In the matter of approving the amended ditch maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessments for Evans Farm, Section Two, Phase A, Parts One and Two, Phase B, Phase C, and Phases D, Parts One and Two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The, the sequence and order of the plating at Evans Farms has caused the need to redistribute some of the assessments within those developments. So, this isn't a new petition as much as it is just reshuffling the cards in terms of how those assessments are distributed.
Okay, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven one. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven two. In the matter of approving an agreement with the country engineer, county engineer, sorry, Chris. County engineer, Chris Boserman, to perform the duties of the position of county drainage engineer.
So, are you the engineer for the whole country now, Chris?
I'm, but just the northern part of the counties in the country. So, yeah.
Jennifer gave you her motion. Yeah, comments?
I, I've been performing these duties for, for the county since two thousand and one. And certainly glad and willing to continue to do that. They're related to the, the EPA Phase Two Stormwater Regulations that go beyond my statutory duties as county engineer. But it makes, there's a lot of synergy between my office and those activities. And certainly willing to continue to do that. And I think I can do it in a better way than you could by hiring outside, outside help to do that. So. So, this would begin at the beginning of my, my next term, you know, on January the third.
Yes. Vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven two. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven three. In the matter of approving the repayment of an advance of funds and the continuation of advanced fund general fund dollars for year twenty twenty, approving supplemental appropriations, transfer of appropriations, and transfer of funds to Fund Two nine four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, Rob and Karen have worked really hard on this. And this is basically a whole series of, of accounting gymnastics related to our South Old State project that we, recall that we advanced, we were receiving federal grant money for the project. We advanced the construction out of our funds to get reimbursed at a later time. ODOT has some restrictions on how they can reimburse us and, and where that gets posted and how that gets handled in terms of our accounting when they change the way they, they posted it to us. So, if you have questions, further questions about that, but I.
Well, I guess the question is, are we being made whole?
We are, yeah. But it's, it's just a, a series of actions to make sure all the money gets posted and counted for in the right way.
Right spots.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rob filled me in on Friday because this is a complicated series of transactions. But I'm, I agree, we are being made whole. So. All right, vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven three. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven four. In the matter of approving a project agreement by and between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Transportation Improvement District for the Graphics Way extension.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, you recall that the TID moved forward with improving or building the missing section of Graphics Way in Orange Township. This, this agreement basically solidifies and memorializes the relationship between your board and the TID in this activity. And then later this year, there'll be a, an assessment, an agreed-upon assessment by the property on the west side of, of Graphics Way. And.
Where is Graphics Way?
Graphics Way is a, is a township road that runs parallel to Route twenty-three between Orange Road and our Home Road Extension.
Oh, okay.
And there was a, a piece of, of land there that wasn't being developed. AEP actually owned it. And so, they weren't, didn't have a lot of motivation to move forward and develop the ground. They did donate, they did dedicate the right-of-way for, for the roadway. And the LifePoint Church that's under construction between twenty-three and this Graphics Way piece that's under construction now wanted to have, wanted to have Graphics Way extended for their access points in and out of their church. And so, the, the deal was, AEP donated the land for the roadway, and the church agreed to be assessed for a portion of the cost of the, of the road. So.
Oh, great.
That, that's, that'll be the next step that, that we get to. But there's an agreement already in place where they've agreed to that assessment. This is an adversarial thing. I think they, they see it as a benefit. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it would be good to have that, that leg finished.
Yeah.
Now, it goes all the way up to Home Road.
Yeah, actually, well, so it's the Green Meadows piece that'll go all the way.
Oh, it's the Green Meadows?
Green, well, it goes to Home Road now.
Yeah.
I was thinking you were saying Lewis Center Road. So, the Green Meadows, the next.
Yeah.
The next, the next parallel road goes all the way to Lewis Center.
Yeah, and that, and then it'll be extended all the way up to, I guess, Glen Parkway ultimately will connect in there.
Yes.
This is the road that currently dead ends there at Anna Menards at the beginning of the LifePoint Church.
It is, yeah. So, it's actually, this, this piece is open now. So, it was constructed and the piece we're talking about is constructed and open.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, and this is another one of those projects that just helps a little bit with the traffic on twenty-three.
Right.
The, the Green Meadows will do further.
From a traffic engineering standpoint, if you, once the development intensifies there in that area, to think that, you know, traffic that needs to go, you know, two sites to the south, somebody in the south needs to get to Menards, doesn't have to go out to twenty-three, up twenty-three, and then back off. So, keeping those local trips local is one of the important things in terms of how that develops. And this is a, you know, not a big road, but it's a key thing to making sure that whole concept gets implemented.
So, it is finished, huh?
It is.
Okay, okay. I drive by there all the time and didn't realize that it had been finished.
Now, you've got more places to go.
That's right, that's right. Now, I can get my shopping done easier.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
While we have Engineer Boserman here and Rob Riley, we do have another business item for the engineers' office.
Back to CAD?
Yes, revolving a CAD if we're okay with. We've been sent a resolution with all of the appropriate information in it. We don't actually have the physical plat with us right now. But if we're comfortable, I can read that resolution.
Yeah, we're recommending proceeding with approval of that plat. The reason it wasn't on, we didn't request it for this particular agenda already, was we didn't have all the necessary paperwork in place. And in normal circumstances, we would just defer it maybe until Thursday or even next week. But obviously, with your year-end schedule, not meeting again until January, we don't want to create a hardship on the, the property owner or developer in this case. So, to my knowledge, all the required, the driveway maintenance agreement has been signed and approved. If there is still anything outstanding, obviously, Director, Executive Director Scott Sanders, obviously, still holds the plat and needs to sign that plat before it actually gets approved. That's an additional checkpoint. But obviously, this is a little bit out of the ordinary because, just because of the year-end schedule. We don't want to hold this up until January because my understanding is one of the, the property owners needs to close.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, just by way of background, I don't know if you two got a call, but I, I got a call from a gentleman who is buying a parcel in this project, and he wanted to, he really needed to close by year-end. So, I got in touch with the engineers' office and recognized that this is our last regular meeting. So, it'd be difficult to do with the normal procedure. But it looks like we're going to be able to satisfy all the, check all the boxes and still get the slat approved by year-end, so he can close. But again, appreciate your quick response to, to helping this gentleman out and get this, get this moving. So.
And Rob, you'll make sure all the Ts across, the Is dotted?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you have a resolution to read then, Jennifer?
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven five. In the matter of approving the Platte subdivision for the Backstoke CAD plat.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Again, I appreciate the, the assistance. I think this gentleman will really appreciate it. And again, it was, it'd gone through all the process and received the approval at Regional Planning last Thursday. So, it isn't, you know, everything, it just hadn't all had, had all the signatures. So, again, let's take a vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, that brings us to item number twenty-three. Resolution number twenty dash one one seven six. In the matter of approving a quitclaim deed to transfer real property to the Tri-Township Board of Fire District Trustees and authorizing the county administrator to represent the board at the, and approve and execute all documents associated with or necessary for the closing of the transaction.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners Mike Fromer, County Administrator. This is just the, the next action in the approval and transfer of the property at the Bixby Campus to Tri-Township Fire. That will be a joint station for our EMS department as well. So.
Yeah, again, this is, we've talked about this and approved the transfer before. So, this, this is great that we get the deed done. And do you have an idea on timeline for when they're going to construct?
They're, they're currently in the process of hiring an architect, going through the professional services selection process. So, I would anticipate they would start construction, you know, probably mid-next year. I know they're under a tight timeframe because their existing station at the point needs to be vacated for that project. So.
Is this a lot split, Eric, or is this a parcel that already exists?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that was considered in driving these resolutions is that we won't have to do a lot split.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, we'll authorize Mike to file all the necessary paperwork to split that until we can transfer it.
Okay, okay.
Another comment I have is that this is, I think, an example of a county working with another entity, in this case, the township, Tri-Township. And it will provide opportunities for expanding of EMS when appropriate. And that will be good for the county, and it'll be good for the residents in the area. And by working together, I think we will all benefit they because they've got to move. It's a logical location for them and, and us because it allows us an opportunity to expand when appropriate.
Yeah, the, the long-range plan is to put a station in that general vicinity, not anywhere in the near future. But, you know, as, as building continues, we'll evaluate that down the road. So, again, great, great progress. Take a vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Commissioners Mike Fromer, County Administrator. When we started the budgeting process, you know, we, we set out a goal to have a fairly flat budget for twenty twenty-one as our revenues in twenty twenty were fairly flat and more, you know, was more similar to what we received in twenty nineteen. So, we wanted to go into twenty twenty-one to keep our expenses down so that we can allow our revenue to recover to pre-COVID levels. And I think we accomplished that, you know, it was a little bit more challenging because there's some things we wanted to start up with, like the Public Defenders Commission. And also with our benefits increasing, our benefit cost was up quite a bit. But I think we've got a budget that, and also, one of the things that we want to do moving forward is to have quarterly and semi-annual. review of the budget, um, to have like a mini-hearing, um, to, to review the, the status and, and do that. I think it's a, a good way to go. Karen's here to answer any really difficult questions you have.
You'll take the easy one.
No, I, I, Karen, uh, deserves a ton of credit, Karen First, in, in working with the Otter's Office. I know Cy Keely was very instrumental in, you know, working through this, this process. I felt like setting out the goal of where we wanted to be at the beginning, um, helped steer that direction for you guys and, and, you know, I think that we were able to get pretty close to that, so...
I think it did too, and Karen, thank you so much, and, and also to Cy Keely, and, and Mike, you were involved in every part of this too. Thank you.
The, uh, I think this process has gone very smoothly in what's been a very difficult time, and I debated, I considered, ramble, I'm just going to read a quote that will be in the press release today, which I think pretty much summarizes the role that everyone in this county played in making this work. And this, the unique thing about Delaware County is, quote, "The spirit of we're all in this together. And because the commissioners, elected officials work well together, we have produced a conservative budget that still keeps our great county moving forward to the ultimate benefit of our taxpayers, county residents. There is a recognition that COVID issues could still affect us in two thousand and twenty-one. This budget allows us the flexibility to address any unexpected issues." And I think that pretty well summarizes the effort made by Karen and Mike and everybody involved in the commissioner's side and all the elected officials. I think the spirit of cooperation, we as taxpayers and residents throughout the county should be very, um, feel very good about the process and how we proceeded this year, so, uh, and that's all I have to say.
That's a very good point. I think I, I recognize the role of the other elected officials too because they had a big role in this in keeping their expenses down and, and even making some cuts near the end, so, thank you.
Yeah, the operating spending went up just ever so slightly, and that's, that's, uh, the lion's share of the general fund budget, um, but overall, the budget is down a little bit because of, uh, less capital spending next year. So again, I, I, I agree. I want to thank all the elected officials, thank Karen, thank you, Mike. This is a lot of work. I think, again, every year, I think we, we do it a little better, um, and with the new reporting system, we understood it better, um, so, uh, but I really like the, the quarterly reviews next year because, again, twenty twenty, you know, at this point last year, who'd have, who would have envisioned the crazy year that twenty twenty turned out to be? And we're not out of this yet, um, you know, revenues have recovered pretty much, um, so we're not looking negative, but again, who knows? You know, the, who, who knows what'll come, but I want to thank again everybody. We have a fiscally prudent budget. We're going to maintain, you know, our financial strength. It's very important, um, we're, we continue to qualify to be AAA rated, um, for a whole bunch of reasons, and, you know, we're, we're being fiscally prudent, uh, in these, these challenging times. So I want to thank everybody for contributing, working together to make this happen, um, and, uh, you know, we'll keep a real close eye on it in twenty twenty-one, because who knows what's coming next? But again, thank you all for, for doing this. Let's, uh, take a vote, Jennifer.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven eight in the matter of approving a compensation adjustment for certain employees under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, and with the, um, approval of the twenty twenty-one budget, this resolution would allow for a two percent wage adjustment for certain employees under your appointing authority. It would include, um, all employees that, uh, don't negotiate a separate wage adjustment, um, in a collective bargaining agreement, and those collective bargaining employees that follow the county compensation plan. Uh, this would take place, um, the first pay in twenty twenty-one, and also, we would, um, request that the clerk to the board provide copies of this resolution to the other appointing authorities within the county and, um, request that they follow the same, um, the same wage adjustments for next year.
And I believe based on the way the budget process went, there is that expectation, and again...
That's correct.
reinforced that everybody's working together.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dawn, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one seven nine in the matter of continuing the employment of legal counsel and fixing the compensation to be paid for legal services per student to RC three zero nine point zero nine C.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
So the revised code requires that your board pass a resolution to employ an attorney without, uh, going to the Court of Common Pleas for, uh, approval, and this resolution would authorize the continued employment of legal counsel, and it fixes the compensation, um, for legal counsel for your board in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one seven nine. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash one one eight zero in the matter of authorizing a designated Roth account feature as an additional contribution option within the State of Ohio Deferred Compensation Program for Delaware County employees.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
So this resolution authorizes the county to begin allowing employees to participate in a deferred compensation Roth four fifty-seven plan with the State of Ohio Deferred Comp Program. Um, you may remember back in twenty seventeen, um, when the legislature allowed a Roth, um, program, the County Commissioners Association did authorize that, and we passed a resolution to allow employees to participate. Um, the State of Ohio just recently, um, has, uh, allowed this for, uh, any employee that participates with the State of Ohio program, and so this resolution would authorize and, um, allow our employees to participate in their Roth, uh, four fifty-seven. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think it's a nice add, you know, to offer, it isn't going to appeal to everyone, but there are going to be some people who would like to participate in a Roth, and so...
That's correct.
Good, good that we have another option for our employees to, uh, put retirement money aside. Okay, vote.
Vote on motion twenty dash one one eight zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, but before you go, I want to make sure we acknowledge that Eric has been re-engaged for next year, and I want to acknowledge the great contributions that Eric does give us as, as a...
You can't see him smiling because he's got a mask on.
Yeah, no, he's got a mask on, we can't see. He's probably blushing.
He's looking.
But no, again, we really appreciate your contributions and I'm glad to have you around for another year, Eric, so, thank you.
Your counsel is, uh, you're always generous in your counsel and your honesty, and when we have questions, and, uh, I think it's, uh, it's been a good relationship for everybody involved.
I, I just wrote something down too to thank Eric because we are indeed very, very fortunate for his counsel, and, and the thing is too, historically, his knowledge of, of, uh, the Commissioner's Office and it's, but, I mean, he's just fabulous, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
A lot of knowledge there, that's for sure, whether it's development-related or employment law-related.
That's right.
It's been very, very helpful to have him onboard.
Right.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you.
Administrator reports?
Administrator reports. If Administrator Fromer has any addition, though. Okay, well, that brings us to Commissioner Committee Reports.
Uh, Commissioner Lewis?
Uh, Bridges Community Action still has a program. It's, uh, through the CARES Act, and, uh, there's a little flyer that they have, uh, on, uh, and, and they've also, on it, and they also have, uh, have things on social media, but, um, it says, the flyer says, "If you're behind on your rent and mortgage, facing eviction or home foreclosure due to COVID-nineteen, or have a disconnection for your water bill, you can call our, the Delaware, actually, Bridges Community Action. That number is seven four zero three six nine three one eight four." And, um, just really, uh, urge anyone, uh, they're obviously, you have to be, uh, two hundred percent or less of the federal poverty guidelines, but, but if you'll call them, if you think you might be eligible, they can, they can walk you through this, and, uh, quite a bit of money has gone out. Uh, we've been allocated this with our six, uh, county partnership, but Delaware County did receive the most CARES money for this project, and so, uh, I believe even more money is coming in, so if there is a waitlist at this point, um, they can put you on a waitlist to, to get help, so, and with that said, I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Good to be pretty close.
That's right.
Mr. Merrill?
I have a couple of things, uh, first of all, Commissioner Benton, I'm going to give you five numbers and see if you can tell what they mean. Two nine three three one. Twenty-nine, space, three three one.
Mike, you're laughing, you know what it is?
I think one is the number of cares and the other's the number of yards.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Trey Serman.